We're on the air. I'll call the Town of Londonderry Planning Board Meeting to order for March 6, 2024. And tonight, we have, first part of our meeting is administrative board work where we get our business done. And then we have a continued plan. I'll get to this when we get to it, and then withdrawn plan. And then another business, we will be discussing our rules of procedure. I just want to note for all board members or anyone who talks, please be close to the microphone so people at home can hear you. They hear a lot of mumbling going on also, but at least, you know, enunciate clearly, and be concise, and be close to the microphone. So there are an older audience also that listens I get complaints about. So I think it applies to other boards and commissions and the council also. So maybe someone in the staff somewhere could send a memo to board chairs and everything to remind the committee members, at least be close to the microphone. I just want to also congratulate Jason Knights, who is a full member now, replaces Al Sepeck. There are two years left in the term, so. And also want to welcome Jonathan Cruz, a sergeant from our police department who is replacing Bruce Halliwell. So Bruce has evidently decided to step down, and we now have a new administrative employee, ex officio. And that's what's required by statute. At this point, we have three ex officios. Town council, administrative employee, and town manager, or town manager designee.
Ledge.
So, I'd like to, yes, and also what I always point out, this is from my DuPont background, fire exits. This room, there's two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, the front of the room and the back of the room. If you need to evacuate for any reason at all, I just say if we need to evacuate for any reason at all, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you. Go outside, move away from the building, and don't come back into our fire facilities. I've instructed us to do so. So don't forget the exits. At times, they can be very important. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise with pledge allegiance to the American flag. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have, Johnny's here. And we got a full house. It doesn't happen too often, but it's good to have a full house. So I don't need to appoint any alternates to vote for a regular member who is absent or has to step down. So administrative board work, we have approval of minutes of February 14, 2024. If there are no questions from the board on that, I will take a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Okay.
Second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Jake, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And probably you abstained Ted abstains, and you abstained also Jonathan, because you weren't here. And the minutes carry. They are approved, and they are the official minutes of the meeting of February 14. Next we have is regional impact determinations. Do we have anything calling? Pardon me.
Oh.
Slip of the tongue. You have to be here a few more years, Kelly. You have to get me trained, please.
No training yet.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so there are none then. Okay. Discussions with town staff. Anything, John?
Nope, nothing this evening.
Roads are holding up?
That's it.
Good. Kelly.
I believe Jake has a merger request.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
This is a long one, Mr. Chair, so bear with me. I'd like to make a motion for a lotline merger for Londonderry Holdings LLC of seven parcels into one. Tax map and lot numbers 28-31-6, 28-31-36, 17-002-0, 28-29-2, 17-005-3, 17-005-4, and 17-005-5.
Okay, and lotline merger requires a motion by the board, which Jake just did. And a second to allow the chair to sign the record there.
I'll second it, but I guess I have some questions if we have a discussion. So where is this piece of property specifically located?
This is the Londonderry Holdings, which is up at Akira Way, which would be, they came in front of us two months ago, maybe?
Essentially for the land unit development.
Yep.
That we saw.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, they had a merger, I know, that they brought to us.
Yeah, I don't have the tax maps memorized, so people appreciate that.
I don't think any of us do. We have to have it in front of us. Some areas, yes, but not everything. Okay, so.
So we got a motion and a second?
So we got a motion, second, without discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and motion carries, and I will sign those.
For you, sir.
Okay, anything else, Kelly?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the board have anything?
Oh, sorry. Extend request for Rhino Capital.
Oh, okay. And what is the, their request to extend the date?
What's the date? Thank you. May, sorry, May 7, 2024.
May 7? Okay, okay. This is Rhino Capital.
So, Mr. Chair.
A little more detail on that?
The approval period ending on May 7. So it's adding 60 days to that. 60 extension to the approval of May 7. So 60 days past May 7. Did you say May 27?
No, hold on.
May 7.
Plus 60.
Plus 60.
Plus 60? That's a 90.
Oh, so that's not to May 7, then?
No, that's my mistake.
May 7 is a Tuesday. Even if you go 60 days after that.
Which one's Rhino Capital? July 6?
July 6.
Then either on Page Road or.
That's a meeting.
July 6 is a Saturday.
So it would be that following Wednesday?
10th.
The 10th. Extension to July 10, 2024. Okay.
So.
And what is the parcel we're talking about?
This is 13 Page Road, so this is the Rhino Capital Building. If you're on Page Road.
The corner.
Building up on the left there.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to grant the 90-day extension to July 10, 2024, for the 13 Page Road site plan.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Jake, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, and chair votes affirmative. And Rhino Capital 13 Page Road has been continued, I mean, has given an extension to July 10 of 2024. You have anything else of our staff?
No, Mr. Chair.
All set? Okay, anything with the board?
Did you second my motion on the meeting minutes?
I did.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just a little observation, Mr. Chair. I did see where they cut down trees along Rockingham Road for the sewer line that's going to be extending from Page Road down to the.
Sandborne.
Sandborne, yeah. So it looks like that's moving along. The trees are cut right now, so you can see it visibly from the road.
Oh, okay. Good.
We had given them approval to do that.
Yes.
We had worked.
Yep. That was a, in addition to their, you know, conditionally approved site plan. The only thing I got is let everyone know that we have a town meeting on Tuesday, the 12th of March. And also on Sunday, early AM. Our clocks move ahead one hour, so don't forget, or otherwise you'll be late.
Art, Art, I was going to say, make sure you explain that it's voting day. Some people may not realize town meeting.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
What it is.
The town meeting's not like the old traditional town meeting we used to have. It's, you just go and vote for, you know, your offices and all the, you know, articles that are on the town warrant.
And the school.
And the schools, yes. There's a lot of paper, I'm sure, that's involved with this, so.
And it's a lot of fun.
You fill the little circle in. Okay, we're going to move to new plans, conceptuals, et cetera. And let's see, public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan for a 96-unit multifamily residential development and associated site improvements in the multifamily residential II district, 35 Gilchrist Road, tax map 7, lot 118. Gilchrist Realty Holdings LLC is the owner and the applicant. And the applicant has requested a continuance to April 3, 2024. And I just need a motion to grant the continuance.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, motion by Lynn, second by Ted. Any discussion by the board? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and motion carries. And official public notice is the public hearing for an application for a formal review of a site plan for a 96-unit multifamily residential development and associated site improvements in the multifamily residential R3 district, 35 Gilchrist Road, tax map 7, lot 118. Gilchrist Realty Holdings LLC is the owner and applicant, has been continued to 3rd of April, 2024, at 7:00 PM, right here, and this is your only official public notice. We also have, I'm going to skip over, just for a moment here, the warehouse. We have a public hearing on a waiver request to Section 3.14 Traffic Impact Analysis and 4.13 Permits of the Londonderry Site Plan Regulations for a conditionally approved 12,000-square-foot, 12,000-square-foot medical building and a 3,000-square-foot bank and associated site improvements in the mixed-use commercial MUC zoning district and conservation overlay district. 175 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, lot 60-2, 71 Perkins Road, tax map 15, lot 51. 171 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, lot 59. Gene Gegnan is the owner, and Bill Greiner is the applicant, and that has been withdrawn. That won't be discussed tonight. So that leaves us with one public hearing here. So we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a site plan and conditional use permit to construct a 175,000-square-foot high cube warehouse with 34,725 square feet of wetland impact and 139,776 square feet of wetland buffer impact. 60 Pettingill Road, tax map 14, lot 49-2. Zone Gateway Business District, 1 Pettingill Road Realty is the owner, and Lansing Melbourne Group, LMG, is the applicant. And first thing we need to do with this is determine the completeness.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, there's one outstanding checklist item, and if the board decides to accept the application as complete, these items should be waived for acceptance purposes only. The applicant has not provided utility clearance letters for gas or water services per the regulations. So again, if you do waive that requirement, it'll be for acceptance purposes only.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept this as complete for acceptance purposes only.
Okay, motion by Jake.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Second by Lynn. Does the board have any discussion?
So you're waiving the item for acceptance only?
For acceptance only. So it'll be a condition of approval.
Yeah, it'll be a condition, yes. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative. And the application clearance letter has been provided for acceptance purposes only, and this makes the application complete. I need a motion for completeness.
So moved to Mr. Chair.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion on completeness by Jake, second by Lynn. Any discussion by the board? Sign that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions, chair votes affirmative, and the application has been accepted as complete. And who's going to make the presentation?
Yeah, if we just start with number one.
Great.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Tom Burns. I'm a senior project manager at TF Moran. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Lansing Melbourne Group, to review a proposed site plan development for the property located at 60 Pettingill Road. On the screen, you'll see the aerial with the delineation. This is the location of the site. For those who may or may not be familiar with this area, this is a site located in the Gateway Business District. It is located directly adjacent to the UPS Pratt &amp; Whitney facility along the southerly side of Pettingill Road. That's the building you can see that's, that's the large structure there that's on the southerly portion of the page, and it's directly across from the current New Balance construction site. This project is, represents kind of the continued development of this industrial corridor that really was opened up by construction of Pettingill Road that started in 2014 with the, the construction of the UPS site. This parcel is 16, 16.9 acres of scrub shrub, scrub shrub and wooded land. It's been previously disturbed by past gravel mining operations. It has been disturbed but never previously developed. If we can go to the second building.
Kelly, we can't get this, can we?
Thank you.
If you give me a second, I can put it in there.
Thank you.
Okay. So on your screens, you'll see the proposed building for the site. So what the applicant is proposing to do is to construct a 175,000-square-foot high cube warehouse facility with associated parking and loading areas on the site. It's a development that is similar to one that the same applicant is proposing at 68 Roundstone Drive as well. This building would be a 36-foot clear height structure, consistent with the surrounding developments. Again, those that have been constructed in this area over the last 10 years include UPS, FW Web, FedEx, and New Balance. Though the footprint for this building is obviously quite a bit smaller. This is about a tenth of the size of FW Web. It's about a third of the size of, of the UPS facility. The building construction would be concrete panels in a neutral color palette. That was presented to the Heritage Commission, and that was their preference relative to the colors and materials. And as shown, it would include a glassed main entryway that would be located on the northwest corner of the building. This would face the intersection of Pettingill Road and Rey Wazork to put that front and center at that intersection view. The rendering that you see is taken from, was developed from within the site. So what you're seeing is that's the, the parking circulation that goes around the building, and this actually was done looking at elevation from their drive aisle. So this is looking right at that corner of how it would look. If we can go to number three. Thank you. So on your screens, you'll see the site layout for the plan, and it shows where the building is located. So it's, it's running roughly parallel with Pettingill Road, the long side of the building. Again, the site's about 16.9 acres. And you see the building is sited centrally within it. This is largely within the area that was previously deserved, disturbed relatively level area around elevation 195. For reference, the existing access drive that comes in on the northeast corner where the site would access from, that's up around elevation 210 up at the roadway. So this is set down a little bit relative to the entrance way off of Pettingill. Again, access to the site would be via that shared driveway entrance that's on the northeast corner of the site. This is the driveway that was constructed when UPS was built, and they have shared access. So they would use this access, this entrance as well for vehicle and truck circulation. As you can see on the plan, proposed parking for employees and visitors would be located on the northeast and west sides of the building with truck circulation coming along the north face and then down the west side to access the loading areas. It would be along the southerly, southerly face of the building that would be shielded from view from Pettingill Road. We have additional areas, in addition to the parking areas that are proposed, we've made provisions for additional parking, and I'll touch on that towards the end. We do have a one waiver request relative to parking. So at this point, we're proposing less than what is required by the Land Use Code, but we have provisions to provide additional parking on the site that I can go over shortly. Go to the next for grading and drainage, please. Thank you. So looking, looking at the site, the site generally grades from the, from the northeast down towards the southwest. Because we're developing the whole site, we're basically intercepting the stormwater that's coming through. And what we're doing is proposing, because of the scale of the development, we're proposing two large storm tech subsurface stormwater systems. These will be located, these are, you can see are these, these hatched areas that are located in the southerly loading area as well as along the westerly side of the building. So these storm tech systems have been designed for the volume of the stormwater runoff from all of the analyzed storm events as required by the Town of Londonderry as well as by the state of New Hampshire for alteration of terrain permitting requirements. Because the site was previously mined, the groundwater table is, is fairly shallow out here. And so in consult with NHDES, we've sought a waiver from them for infiltration and recharge requirements. And so these would be line systems that are, again, are sized for volume. So they're, they're significant because we wouldn't be using any infiltration as far as the state is concerned. And that's consistent with the town where we don't typically model for infiltration as well. These systems would, again, attenuate any increases or impacts from stormwater runoff that's generated by the site so that we would have no increases to any of the downstream or off-site interests. Discharge from these stormwater systems after pretreatment is completed would be via a closed culvert that would tie into the existing drainage network that runs along, parallel to Rey Wazork, along the westerly portion of our site and down to that existing bioretention area in the southwest corner of the property. So again, we're proposing no impacts relative to our stormwater runoff. The site's going to be serviced by sewer, water, gas, and electric extensions from existing stubs that were put in along Pettingill Road. Sewer would be extended from a, would be extended to, I should say, to a new manhole that was recently installed as part of the New Balance project that's on the north side of Pettingill Road. We would extend sewer under Pettingill through existing sleeves that were installed when the road was constructed. Similarly, gas would go under Pettingill Road through, through sleeves that were put in it during the road construction and would tie in up by the New Balance entranceway where the gas is stubbed. Electric, electrical service would be extended from the existing transformer that's adjacent to our site entrance, and water would be extended down the road on the southerly side of Pettingill Road from where that is stubbed, would extend down to our site as well. We've been coordinating with all the utilities. As noted at the outset, we've gotten, we've provided will serve letters from all the utilities except for gas. We have the service agreement, which I submitted to the town today. We've, we have a gas service agreement with Liberty Utilities for the extension of their service, and we have been coordinating with Manchester Waterworks. We had some minor edits to our plans that were resubmitted to them, mostly just making sure we were updating our details to their specifications and adding some notes to the plans. But relative to our design layout, there were no changes requested. So we anticipate we should have their sign off relatively soon as well. All site lighting will conform to Londonderry's requirements. Will be downcast lighting around the perimeter of the, around the perimeter of the parking and loading areas. And site landscaping will be located also around the perimeter of the parking as well as within interior islands. This landscaping was reviewed again with the Heritage Commission. It was a combination, thank you, a, as you'll see on the plan, is a combination of native species that were selected, particularly hardy ones for this area, as well as selection of trees that, at their mature height are designed to help to screen the massing of buildings of this size and provide screening and shading in the parking areas as well. Again, we reviewed this with the Heritage Commission. They, they were pleased with the, the selection that we, that we used on this plan. Relative to the use, again, this is a, proposes for a high cube warehouse facility. These are typically highly automated warehouse buildings. They provide some short-term storage of pallets of goods prior to distribution to retail or industrial facilities. Similar to some of the other buildings along this corridor, they generally have fewer employees per square foot than is typical, and they are low-traffic generators due to their, the breakup of their three-shift operations that they typically run. So what happens is their traffic's usually generated during off-peak hours. We provided a traffic study for the site. It was submitted and reviewed by StanTech, and the results have been incorporated into the Pettingill Road corridor study that was prepared by StanTech previously on behalf of the town. And that study identified imminent and near-future developments on the corridor. And this project is one of those six imminent projects that were identified in that study. StanTech has determined that signal timing adjustments along the corridor are adequate to mitigate the traffic that's generated by all six of these imminent projects, including this one. And they proposed a fair share contribution from each project, and the developer for this project has agreed to make their portion, their contribution to the fund. Additionally, just touching briefly on permitting for the site. In addition to the site plan application, we also have a conditional use permit application before the board. This is for impacts to proposed wetland buffers that are on the site. And just touching on that, the development itself, it proposes a disturbance of a little over 34,000 square feet of man-made wetlands that are located centrally in the site. Kelly, if we could go back to sheet four, I think. So the area within the building footprint, and it may be hard to see on your screens, but the, the hatched area within the footprint of the building, that's, that's the area of the wetlands. As you can see, it's, it's located right in the center of the site. Again, these are, these are man-made wetlands that were, that were developed or created through the past mining operations of the site. And also, we, we believe maybe due to some of the runoff from, with the development of Prologis, it may have increased the size of them a little bit. But the, the wetlands themselves, we've, we've reviewed these with New Hampshire DES and Fish and Game as part of our pre-application and then subsequent application for a dredge and fill permit to fill these wetlands on the site. One of the things we looked at with Fish and Game was the value of these wetlands, any impacts to them as a result. It was determined there were no endangered species that were identified that had habitats on the site when the, when a wildlife study was conducted out here. And based on the review with DES, the option for mitigation was an in-loofe payment that was going to, that was going to be given rather than any type of replication for these, for the, the low value and low square footage of the wetlands overall. Mitigation for impacts that are for wetlands of this size, this is, this is not atypical for these. These in-loofe payments are typically given to the existing ARM fund for the aquatic resource mitigation. It's consistent with mitigation that was done for impacts to wetland areas along this corridor and on some of the surrounding development sites. And just the, just so you're aware, the ARM fund, where the mitigation, the in-loofe payment would go is, it's considered an alternative to project-specific mitigation for smaller wetland projects, and it's where individual mitigation for wetland impacts like these is considered impractical. So developers pay in-in-loofe payment to compensate for any of the impacts to these resources. And funds are made available through grants to fund restoration enhancements of other areas across the state. And it's become kind of a preferred way to manage the smaller impacts by DES and also for Army Corps of Engineers. So based on that, we've submitted to DES our dredge and fill permit application. It's been reviewed. They came back with a couple of responses. We responded to that. And so we expect the permit is going to be issued in short order. There were no significant concerns on their end at all for it. A second in-loofe payment that's specific to the Pettingill corridor has also been established. And that was in 2014. That was done right around the time when Prologis was done in Pettingill Road. And that's for mitigating impacts to any threatened or endangered species on the Pettingill Road area. And these payments are pooled by Fish and Game to establish and enhance specific habitat restoration with the, within the Town of Londonderry. They established a fee amount for that, and the applicant is going to be paying that as well, has agreed to pay that. Additionally, we have, due to the, the size of the, the development, we have an alteration of terrain permit application that's before DES. The permit review's been completed. They just have to wait until the wetlands permit's issued before then they, they then release their permit as well. But review has been complete and has been satisfied on their end. We have FAA permits required due to the proximity to the airport and the runways. We have FAA permits required due to the proximity to the airport and the runways. The FAA made a determination the building poses no impact within their flight path, so the permit's been issued for that, and they're also reviewing for the crane heights. We provided them the anticipated crane height for during construction for a temporary permit, and that's anticipated any day as well. The sewer discharge permit for the additional sewer extension to the site, as well as for the discharge from this property, that's been reviewed by the town, has been forwarded to Manchester for their signature, so that then it can then go up to DES for the sewer permit to be issued as well. And then, as I noted, in addition to the site plan application, we also have the, the cup as well before you, and that is for impacts to the buffers, to those wetlands that I mentioned that are in the, the center of the site. So, we would be seeking a conditional use permit to impact those buffers, which ultimately, once the DES issues their permit to fill those wetlands, the buffers themselves end up going away when the approval for the wetlands to be filled is issued. Lastly, we have one waiver request before you, and that's for the parking. We are proposing less parking on the site than is, than is required per the land use code, and we had provided an additional area. Two-hundred-and-nineteen spaces are required, and we're proposing up to a hundred-and-seventy-eight, which included an area of, of future parking that we proposed on the site along the west side of the building. That area would be loamed and seeded to start with. We did make provisions in our stormwater design and our utility designs to accommodate future pavement in that area if the parking demand warrants it. Additionally, while that, that brings us up to a hundred-and-seventy-eight, that's still short of the two-hundred-and-nineteen that would be required, which is part of why we're, we're requesting the waiver. But additionally, we, we've looked at the plans and have spoken to, to John regarding potential for additional parking on the site, and what we're, what we'll plan to do is propose, again, an area for future parking expansion that would be along the westerly edge of the drive aisle going around the site. That will allow us to get the additional forty-one spaces that are required by the code. Again, this would be, we would design for it and have that area graded and loamed and seeded, but pavement wouldn't be installed unless the parking demand and their employee demand warrants it, but at least it'll be designed for. We'll make sure our stormwater system can handle it. And so, again, it would be a, a second area that would be listed as future, future parking, but wouldn't be constructed at the time the initial parking is constructed. So, at that point, I believe I've covered just about everything that I can think of with it, and so I'm happy to open it up for questions regarding the site. We do have, Bobby Ball is here as well from our office, if there's any questions on traffic to answer. Our wetland scientist, Chris Danforth, is available as well, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you. What we'll do, we'll go to our town staff, get input from them, of input from the board, and we'll go to the public for input there and bring it back to the board for decision-making. John?
Yeah, so as Thomas indicated, he and I spoke today, and again, they are going to be able to add the additional forty-one required spaces. So, again, it'll be designed. It will not be constructed immediately, but again, the, if at one, at one point, there's parking situations out there, they have a plan to go by, they, they build it, and the stormwater is all taken care of. It's pretty much in sync with some of the other larger developments here in town, so that waiver request goes away.
Okay.
I'll go away, I'll go through the design review items. So, as I indicated, item number one goes away. They'll be able to meet that requirement. Item two are comments related to the title blocks. Item three, we're requesting that they provide documentation that the project meets the performance standards of the Town of Londonderry Site Plan Regulations. Items four and five were, as Tom indicated, there are a number of permits that are required, AOT, DES, wetlands, stormwater, Town of Londonderry Stormwater Permit, New Hampshire DES Sewer Discharge. So, there's a plethora of permits that they're working on. Item number six, we're requesting that they provide appropriate liner details within the plan set for proper construction. Item seven, we're requesting that they label the existing easement, that easement to the southwest corner of the site. That's actually the, the detention pond, the, the town's pond for Pettingill Road. Item eight, we're requesting that they provide details to ensure the constructability of the retaining wall, the guardrails, the proposed lighting, and the dumpster enclosures. We're also requesting that they revise the design to address the embankment slope, which is greater than thirty feet. We're requesting that they look at the stormwater connection into the Town of Londonderry's drainage facilities, indicate and label the inspection ports for the stormwater tech, number two, which is located on the south side of the building. Also, to provide appropriate signatures and signature blocks. Item number nine and ten, we're requesting that they review the sewer profile and provide the appropriate construction-related features. Item eleven is, we're requesting that they update the construction details to be consistent with the Town of Londonderry details and stormwater calculations. Item number twelve, we're requesting that they update the tri, the fire truck turning template to demonstrate the fire truck can access the easily main building entrance. So, they had provided the, the turning template for the fire truck coming off of Pettingill Road, traveling along the north's face of the building, getting them to the rear of the building. The other axis is, again, coming off of Pettingill Road, basically running in a southerly direction on the easterly side of the building, making that turn and getting up in that. That's one of the main entrances, so, and the fire departments, you have to look at that as well. Item number thirteen, we're requesting that they address existing conditions, drainage area plans. Part of that is, there is an increase in the rate of runoff. I think it's a, it's not a, unachievable item to get, get it back to zero. Item C, revise the calculations to eliminate the available storage capacity below the outlet we are invert. Check the structures for constructability. Item D is to update the existing proposed pipe inverts. Item E is to revise the design to accommodate the flows. Couple of those flows to those basins are greater than two CFS, two cubic feet per second, and that's what engineering standard is when you're looking at what the catch basin can handle. Item F, we're requesting that they review and clarify the drainage features associated with a future parking area for proper construction. Item G, we're requesting that they review the post-development areas to ensure all impervious features are included. Item fourteen is, again, just to review the, StanTech's memo relative to the driveway operations. Item fifteen is to address the DRC comments from the planning board and the fire department. So, as Tom said, the town, this is one of the six sites that we had caught wind of, and we've looked at the intersection of Pettingill Road and Ray Wazork. So, again, our first attempt is to open up the cabinets and turn some knobs. We always say that. But, again, it's the timing of the lights, and we, we feel that we should be able to, to accomplish that. So, as Tom indicated, that, that is part of the, the imminent phase of the development of Pettingill Road. So, we have three different phases that we're looking at. As far as the improve, the ultimate improvements where it, it ends up being a four-lane roadway, the improvements that we're doing are really to improve the intersections out there, not necessarily any of the private driveways, because there's a limited amount of private driveways that go to Pettingill Road. This is one of them. New Balance, the exit off of, out of New Balance is another one. And I, no, Tesla does not go on to, Tesla goes on to Industrial Drive. So, there's only two driveways.
So, that's, that's a busy intersection, so.
Yes, it is. Yeah. But, again, the, you know, it's, the condition is poor. It's going to be poorer later, but again, it's poorer on their driveway. It's just like the state. The state looks at it. They, they don't want their, their roadway, our traffic impacting their roadway. So, if anything, don't impact Ray Wazork, and that's kind of the philosophy. That's all I have.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So, as the applicant indicated, relating to the wetland impacts, there's a dredge and fill permit required with DES. The intention is to fill the wetlands in their entirety, so once the dredge and fill permit is issued, the conservation overlay district actually goes away as there's no longer jurisdictional wetland, meaning a CUP isn't required. So, you don't need to take action on that this evening.
Okay. So, I guess we have no, no waivers required for the parking. There'll be no CUP for the, you know, wetland impact?
Correct. Also, the Heritage Commission did recommend approval as submitted, and as John stated, the fire department does still need to take a look at specifically the turning radius, which is part of the conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go through the board. I'll start with Ann.
Thank you.
She has good questions, I know.
Well, I have one question. Did you say the mitigation as a result of this project would be within the Town of Londonderry?
It's an in-loofe payment that's given to, to DES for Fish and Game, and then there's a second payment that's done for TNE for threatened and endangered species. So, there's a second fund that's established that was part of when Pettingill Road, and it was when, it's kind of an extension of when Ray Wazork Drive was put in, and for the lands that are around here. It was basically a mitigation program that was put in with the anticipation that these sites were going to be developed in the future. And so, the, the fund was set up at that time for these sites, so there'll be a fee that will go in. There's going to be a fee payment that goes into that, that, that typically is, is directed towards Londonderry. And then, the, the Fish and Game, the in-loofe payment for the wetland, for the filling of the wetlands themselves goes to Fish and Game, and then they'll use that throughout the state. So, it's two different, two different funds. One that's directly related to Londonderry, one that's statewide.
Although, Tom, I think, again, when the ARM fund, though, goes to the watersheds, you know, the Saco River, Merrimack River.
Yes.
Pemaglosset. So, it's not necessarily directed to Londonderry.
For the, for the ARM one.
For the ARM one.
Yeah.
Follow that, Ann?
Yes. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
All set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
I don't want any questions. Thank you. Tony?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Jeff?
I am, I'm all set as well.
Okay. And I'm all set as well. Jake, you must have something.
I'll give you some. Why not? So, just to confirm, you're going to construct a hundred-and-thirty-six spaces. You have the potential to expand to a hundred-and-seventy-eight. Your estimated employees are two-hundred over three shifts, so that's sixty-six employees per shift. So, that's sixty-six employees per shift. I think a hundred-and-thirty-six parking spaces should be enough. That's all I got.
Okay. Ted?
I have really no issues. Thank you.
Okay. Jason?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Roger?
Looks good to me.
Thank you. Hey, Jonathan, you're all set?
I'm set.
Could I ask one more question?
Yes, yes, Ann.
The Chair of the Conservation Commission is here. I know when it went through the Conservation Commission, that they...
Yeah. Could we get the, the minutes and everything?
Yeah. I, I understand. There was an issue. I, I just hope it's been cleared up with what we heard tonight.
Yes.
So, I was wondering if the Chairman can...
Certainly. Marge, you, you have anything to add?
No.
The fact that they've gotten a wetland permit to fill in the wetland negates the requirement for CUP, so our recommendation was to not approve the CUPs, but it's a moot point now because none is required.
It's gone away.
Right.
And for, for the record, Marge Bedoy.
Marge Bedoy.
Chair of the Conservation Commission.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge.
Thanks, Marge.
I'm all set now.
Anything else, Ann?
No, I'm all set.
You're all set. What are the hours of operation for this facility?
So, they anticipate they're going to run three shifts. It's, right now, the building is, it's being...
So, it's to twenty-four hours.
It's being proposed as a spec build, but, you know, the intention would be it's similar to some of the other facilities where they could run three shifts out here.
Yeah. So, as far as trucks coming and going, they'll always be able to service the facility? They don't need any, like, overnight parking or anything?
No, it's not, just no different than, you know, what the neighboring site is. We've, we're proposing just trailer, the trailer parking, and then any of the trucks, if they're parked, they'd be at the loading docks.
Okay. Other, yes, just...
Would like to say, you know, would like to commend you on the design.
Thank you.
It looks, it looks much nicer than a lot of the warehouses that come through, so want to commend you on that.
Thank you. Yeah. I give credit to the architects as well. They, they did a great job. They want, and the applicant wanted something that was a higher-end looking building, a higher-use building that would, you know, also help to attract a, a good end user to it.
I like the way it breaks up the, it's not just one straight line in, in each direction, so.
Yeah. I think they were prepared for the Heritage Commission, so it was a good design right from the start.
Yeah, we had a very positive, very positive meeting with them.
Are there any others, or anyone from the public have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this site plan? And we have Ray Breslin. Good evening, Ray.
Good evening. Ray Breslin, three Gary Drive. I'd, I'd like to say that this is a good place to put a warehouse. Good location, well, meeting up to the airport. However, it seems though there are considerable concerns with engineering, I think. But, as far as I'm concerned, I would like to know if this site was originally a, I, what am I going to say? Where it was excavated on, was this the same site that Brady Sullivan dumped all that contamination?
No, it is not, Ray.
Okay. Different site, different location. Okay, so that, that answers that question. The only other thing I would be concerned of is, is the stormwater runoff. As, as we all know, we're dealing with issues in, in Londonderry. We're talking about future runoff from not only the, the building, but also the parking lot. As I understand, it's going to be running into retention basins that are going to be lined. I'm wondering what happens when they get filled up. Will they be then run off into the storm drains in the road? Is that what I'm understanding?
Can you explain it to them, Tom?
Sure. So, the, the drainage, the, the drainage system that we're proposing, it's a, it's a closed drainage network, so it will be a series of catch basins throughout the parking lot at the low, low points in the grading. It would be designed to capture all the stormwater runoff from the site, and it would be directed to one of two stormwater systems. So, those, those rec, those large rectangles you can see on the plan. So, those are underground storage chambers underneath the pavement areas. And, again, they're sized. One of the reasons that we're lining it, again, is because we were at a shallow elevation to, to groundwater. So, we're, we are lining these and sizing them so that they store the full volume for all the analyzed storms up through fifty-year storm, and we did look at a hundred-year event as well. And what they do is, it captures the runoff. It runs it through a pretreatment system in each one of those StormTech systems. So, the water is, goes through and goes through a, a pretreatment system before it gets captured and held in that, in those StormTech systems. And, once they're full, once they discharge the overflow pipe from them, if you can see the cursor moving on the screen, there's going to be an overflow pipe that would bring the discharge from those systems. It would tie into the drainage network that's at the base of Ray Wazork, the base of our property, that runs down through to the towns. The town has a bioretention area that's at the bottom of the site there, and that, that picks up road runoff as well and provides treatment for runoff from Pettingill Road. And so, we would discharge our overflow into that. And we actually, and what we're trying, what we're designing for was not only to have a, a reduction, we're trying to design for, we, we are designing for a reduction so that there's no impact to any of the offsite interests. So, that includes the wetlands south of the, the site, so that our numbers are going to be, what will be required both by the town and the state is to have no increase in runoff.
Yeah. I, I understand what you're saying, and that, that makes sense, but I, I'm just wondering if that lower retention, which you're saying is for fire protection, is there a drain underneath where Wazork, where water would go underneath Ray Wazork and down to the river?
No. So, the overflow from, so, again, that's, so that's a treatment basin, so that provides treatment for the runoff that goes into it from Pettingill, and then, so, any residual runoff from our site, because when it was sized, it was assumed they would, we look at what is getting to it now from our site, and we have to try to match what's going in and make sure that there's no impact to the basin, as well as the offsite. So, it treats the runoff, and then the overflow from that is right where the cursor is. It's in the bottom.
Right.
Right in that corner there.
Right.
There's an overflow there that discharges to the large conservation area that's to the south of the site.
And is, is that basin then connected to run under Wazork?
It doesn't discharge to under Ray Wazork.
Okay. It flows to the west ray underneath Route Three A ultimately.
Well, so, so...
Well, so it does go under Ray Rizorik.
3A, route 3A, which is actually in right, the road that goes to, to Litfield.
Okay. All right. Um, as, as you probably know, my concern is always stormwater runoff. Uh, which, um, the city of Manchester is dealing with right now. Uh, I, I just went to a, a meeting earlier today in regards to stormwater runoff and, uh, it's a big impact. And, uh, all of this large roofs on warehouses is of concern. Uh, plus the, uh, the paved surfaces. Uh, so it is of concern. I think we need to be, look at that very carefully. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, we do, Ray.
John?
And you're our water expert.
Well, no, 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 I'm not an expert.
John, along these lines with the overflow going into that retention pond, is there any, there's houses right next to that in Manchester? Is there any concern about maybe it impacting those?
No, because again, as, as Tom indicated, our regulations are you can't increase the rate of runoff.
Okay.
So when everything is, when nothing is built out there, there's five cubic feet per second that's, that's flowing off that area. When everything is, is constructed out there, the runoff might be 15 CFS. But again, they got to reduce it down to the five CFS.
Gotcha.
So that's why even our pond, that's why we have a pond there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Pre and post development flow.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I think it's important to note, um, that you can't, you can't measure the, the issues that Manchester's having with a brand new project like this one. Because this particular project is, is using the most updated, um, engineering, stormwater, wastewater, DES requirements and has either met or exceeded those. When you talk about some of the older buildings in Manchester, um, they did not meet the newest standards. They met the standards of the time, which is not acceptable for today. But these newer projects that are coming in are, are meeting the most stringent standards in, in the history of Southern New Hampshire, the state. Uh, um, and, and the DES and all the state regulations, which are also required by the town, uh, have met or exceeded, um, uh, and any potential problem that, that, that may exist. So, um, I just wanted to get, get that out there to, to, to understand that. Also, this particular applicant is having less asphalt than is required, which is actually a good thing because you're going to have water perking instead of running off. Um, and so that's an advantage in my opinion as well.
I assume that was revolved to what I said.
Ray, first I want to check if anyone else wants to talk first.
Okay.
And then, uh, if you have more to say, I'm looking for something new if you want to talk again. But are there, uh, anyone else that wants to, uh, have a comment or, uh, express concerns or have questions on the site plan? Now there isn't. So Ray, you've got the floor.
Well, I'm assuming what Tony said was kind of rebuttal to what I said.
It was not a rebuttal. It was not a rebuttal. What it was, was it was an explanation of the difference between an old build and a new build. The newest build, a building that hasn't even been built yet, which is meeting or extend, or, or, or exceeding, uh, some of the most stringent, uh, rules and regulations ever. And that, that, um, it, it's important for people to understand that. There's, there's been a lot of problems for a lot of years in a lot of places, including in the town of Londonderry. Because back then, engineering wasn't what it is today. Wetlands weren't, weren't being controlled the way they are today. And so the controls are more stringent today than they ever have been. Can they be stronger? Should they be stronger? We're going to find out.
You were correct in what you're saying.
Ray, I'm not interested in rebuttal or point, counterpoint or anything. This is a public hearing. I just want input from you. You talk to the, the chair. You don't talk to any individual or anything.
Okay, I'll talk to you. Uh, but look, here's the point.
Ray, can you just go to the mic?
Certainly.
People aren't at home hearing you, Ray, if you're away from the mic.
Yeah, Ray Breslin, three Gary Drive. Look, uh, I, I don't want to take up a bunch of time here. But, uh, it's very important to understand that stormwater runoff that goes into a catch basin.
I, I think we know that, Ray.
Okay, so it's, it's untreated water that goes back into the Merrimack River.
Right, you don't need, you don't need to educate us on that. I think we're well aware. We have the engineering here that really know what is going on.
Yeah.
Have done all the calculations. So, uh, if you have something new, let's not rehash what we've already had said, Ray.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for your questions, Larry.
You are.
Okay, seeing no further, uh, public comment, uh, bring it back to the board. Uh, the parking waiver has, uh, has gone away and there is no initial use permit. The only thing we have is the, uh,
Correct it again, that we don't need to do the parking waiver?
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. So if that's the case, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the site plan at 6D Pettingill Road. Which is 175,000.
We're here.
There we go. Motion to grant conditional approval of a site plan, um, to construct 175,000 square foot high cube warehouse 60 Pettingill Road, map 14 lot 49 dash two, zone gateway business district, one Pettingill Road Realty owner and Lansing Melbourne Group, LMG applicant. In accordance with the plans prepared by TF Moran dated September 1st, 2023, last revised January 18th, 2024. Second.
Motion by Jake, second by Ted. Any discussion or further discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, chair was affirmative and the plan has been conditionally approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, let me do this here. And get back to the agenda. Okay, we're on to other business. We have our rules of procedure to discuss. And, uh, to actually approve rules of procedure, we need two consecutive, uh, readings and approvals, uh, per our rules of procedure.
Just give me one sec here, Mr. Chair. Um, so I wanted to go over one section again, which was public comment. Um,
Before you start, can I just briefly?
So I, I've made the edits per the board's request at the January meeting. Yep.
So you'll see those in.
Yellow.
Yellow. The other red lines are.
My original.
Your original edits.
On, I guess before I get ahead of myself on that, so you got, you highlighted the 4.7.9 public comment. Um, but you did leave in, um, where is it? It doesn't go anywhere. Section 12. I would assume section 12 would get erased if, uh, if we don't agree to leave sections 4.7.9 up. Is that correct? Cause I think all of section 12 was added.
Correct. Essentially, you removed that reference to four, whatever.
Yeah.
And added 12. So if the board decides to move 12 at all, all the public comment references go away.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Say, all the public what?
All of, all of the public comment.
Anything to do with it if we get rid of that one. Okay.
You haven't decided yet, so.
Correct.
Wait, there's two kinds of public.
I thought we did, uh, did also.
There's public comment at a public hearing and then there's public comment, public comment. Public comment at a public hearing would be handled under your public hearings.
Yeah, I think when we, uh, had the letter from our attorney that we had, uh, discussed that, that letter. I think Kelly was in there also. And, uh, it was basically a, uh, non-public or privileged information from our attorney, uh, discussion. The, uh,
So.
I think the people at that time felt.
Just to clarify.
To leave it out.
Just to clarify to your question, Mr. D, public comment at public hearings is done under section seven, which is each person, um, any applicant, a butter or any person with interest in the matter may testify in person or in writing. That is essentially your public comment at your public hearing. Um, and that's governed by 7.1.2, which is the outline of, um, commenting. No profanity language, which will lead to a disturbance, that type of thing.
We, you, we avoid using the term public comment when we talk about the public hearing process.
Correct, because it's a public hearing.
Just to avoid confusion.
It's a, it's a public hearing. You know, it's just like what we had right, right here.
It's public hearing comment. Correct. That, yes, that's a good way to put it. So the public comment, section 12, if we decide to not add that into the rules, rules of procedures, all of section 12 would be gone. That would not affect speaking at a public hearing.
Got it. Thank you.
Correct.
On public comment, I know we talked a little bit about it. I know we have received advice from our attorney. Um, one of those pieces of, of advice was that we didn't have anything in our rules of procedure. Um,
Right.
Jeff had found, uh, a little bit of reading material and I did as well. Um, both of them, one is from the New Hampshire Economy Planning Board hearing books.
Third one.
And it refers to an order of business that other business does have a public comment. Um, and the other one was from attorney Stephen Buckley, who we've seen a few times. And he has a whole section of public comment not at public hearings. Um, so I feel like there's enough there to say we can entertain a public comment. I think we as a board need to make a decision one way or the other and we can go through it. I think that, um, you know, there, there has to be, the chair has to have a lot of, um, if somebody's talking about a public hearing that is coming up or anything like that, they, the chair needs to stop that because there will, they can be heard at a public hearing. Um, but.
Yeah, but one of the things I know has been suggested, I think with Stephen Buckley also, but the municipal association, is to have a sign in sheet. So whoever wants to.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually in here. Yeah.
Sign up sheet and then the question or anything is put in writing, which once the meeting starts is presented to the chair. And then chair entertains, reads the question and then, you know, responds. So, and once the, uh, you know, meeting has started, no more is allowed. That's how the state conducts all of its, uh,
Correct.
The committees and everything. You have to come in, you sign your name and you let them know in writing what you're going to say.
And that, it actually does say in there, speaker should sign in to indicate an intent to speak during public comment. So I think what you're referring to is if we had public comment right now, they would sign their intent. Um, you know, Mrs. Jones puts down, she wants to talk about 60 Pettingill Road. We wouldn't talk about it because there's going to be a public hearing on it. Um, so.
She wants to talk about more chickens on an acre of land.
She can, she can talk about more chickens on an acre of land. Exactly. Um, so I, I, I think.
I don't think, I don't think she can. Because, because the rest of the general public doesn't know.
That it's been noticed.
That there's conversation going on about chickens. And there may be some other people that would, that would say, and, and you've seen it at meetings, people show up in their pajamas sometimes because they heard something and they wanted to comment on it. But, but, but people, my understanding of this process is that people, the general public of the town with the two different types of notices that we have to present, um, uh, need to know what's being discussed so that in the event they have an interest or they want to talk, they, they can come in and formulate their opinion. So, and I think that's what the attorney was trying to get at, um, uh, when, when he presented to us his decision of, of you're kind of opening a can of worms if you're discussing, let's stay with chickens. If you're discussing chickens, someone comes in and says, I, I, you know, I know it's six chickens, but it should be 12 or, you know, whatever. Because really our comment, uh, really our only comment, and it might frustrate people more than anything else, would be,
Thank you.
Sorry, you need to go to town council with that because they're the ones that, that make that decision if you want to make that change. So it, it's kind of a circuitous route, I, I think. So I don't know, I don't know what comment we could entertain, but I'm willing to learn if, if, if someone can help me out. So.
Yeah, I think maybe probably be more appropriate that we actually have a, a meeting with our attorney. And then also with the attorney for the municipal association to come in.
I gotta say, we kind of already did that with them presenting what they presented to us. That was their response to public comment. So.
On, on, on our existing rules of procedure. If we had our rules of procedure that had public comment, I'm, I, I don't know what that.
More appropriate to for back and forth questions and answers to have them here. Or by, by Zoom is another, another way to, to do it also. So, because I think there was even some questions that we, we had on the, uh, the attorney's language and everything. It was very, very explicit on no public comment period because most of our function is quasi judicial and we have to render a decision and, uh, we have to act as RSA 673 colon 14 as jurors on a jury. And so you're in sitting in judgment.
Right, but there's other towns that have planning boards that have public comments. So.
Maybe, maybe we should get information from them, how, how they function or like invite the chair in of those, those planning boards and have a discussion with them.
Absolutely.
I think, let's go back to the chickens. So, so we have a, we have a chicken discussion and I say, um, something stupid, which I've been known to do. Uh, I don't like chickens. I don't want any chickens. So now.
Storage units, right?
So now an applicant comes in or, or we're going to make a new rule for chickens. I think at that point, because I've already publicly given my opinion, I have to recuse myself. I think.
On the.
On the chicken thing.
Well, I, I think.
Anything to do with chickens.
I, I feel as though it would be, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, no, go ahead.
I, I feel as though it would be something that, you know, the board doesn't necessarily respond to. You know, somebody has a public comment about chickens. They think we should have more chickens. They've said their comment and thank you. You know?
How about someone else, uh, sends us a letter, uh, two weeks later saying, I want to, uh, be able to come in and speak to the board about chickens.
How does it work if somebody wants to speak about chickens?
If we have it in our, to Jeff's point, if we have it in our rules of order, procedure, whatever, then they can.
Yeah.
But, but it's, it's, this, I don't think you're going to solve anything. I don't think by not responding, would that, would that frustrate someone more?
Yeah, it's like having someone come in and comment on, oh, 96 units on Gilchrist, you know? Basically that, that's before the board now. We, we couldn't say anything on it.
Not even that.
We couldn't even entertain anything from them on it.
From what you just said, they wouldn't even be allowed to talk because we know that that's going to already have a public hearing. So from the get go, you would say, well, can't talk about this. But we're still giving somebody the opportunity to talk about.
Yeah, direct them to when they can speak about that, what they're concerned with.
And these are all definitely like obviously, these are all, these are all valid.
You've now heard their issue and that could conflict us going forward.
Okay, Kelly has something.
I'll just stick with the chickens. Um, it's actually a good example because if my memory serves correctly, we have implemented a poultry, if you will.
It's, yeah, because they could have anything on two acres. It's a one acre.
Complaining by way of, I think it was through code enforcement and by way of public comment at the council. And then the council, in coordination with the planning board and planning department, said, hey, let's do something about this essentially. And we developed an amendment to the zoning ordinance to address those concerns. So that's, that's the process now. People coming, talking about active projects or conceptual projects is a whole nother conversation. And that was kind of the gist of what the legal advice was saying is that there's, it can be challenging to.
Police that.
Monitor that, police that, whatever words you want to use.
Yep.
Um, and this board in particular needs to be cautious of that. Having those discussions before you see something or if something's currently in front of you.
Cause, because we have to be very cognizant of the legal ramifications that could come from it.
But that being said.
At that time, but you know.
We can certainly schedule a meeting with legal for the board to ask these questions directly. That's not a problem.
I think it's important to continue the conversation. I'm not for, against, I'm just here to raise that conversation just because of some of the community input that's been coming. just because of some of the community input that's been coming.
And that's.
And, you know, because there is, there is evidence out there that planning boards do allow public comment. So why do those planning boards allow it? You know, and like, and what's the difference? It's like, so it's, so it's an educational aspect.
That's my whole thing is if, if it's not allowed and we can completely understand it, that's fine. But everything that I see between, you know, stuff you're reading right off of newhamshormunicipal.org, this planning board handbook, and if you just go, start going around and looking at planning board rules and procedures, I bet you I found ten towns that allow public comment.
Right.
You know, so there, there's something there to talk about.
I guess the question would be is how do they not get themselves in trouble?
Well, no one.
They, they could be, uh, up, up country where there's, there's not, not many people involved and not many plans or something.
Some of the towns where you see public comment, that term being used, it is by way of their public hearing process. So they're still following the same rules.
These seem to be very separate from, because it was an agenda, it would be an agenda item of other business public comment, so.
But still, it, but to Kelly's point, you know, it's definitely a good.
Absolutely.
I think we need to have that conversation and a conversation with our attorney. And like her opinion on what comes from the municipal association, there might be a disagreement. There might be some legal technicality in there, uh, and what, uh, you know, the way they're looking at it versus the way our attorney looking at it. Because our attorney wants to protect us, keep the risk down, so that we don't end up in court because of something, uh, input that we've taken.
And, uh, and Mr. Chair, and Mr. Chair, if that is the case, then I would want our rules of procedure to reflect.
Yes.
And to, you know, kind of.
Correct.
To, to be risk averse and really kind of reflect that in that. Uh, so, so I, so I think having our attorney to have this conversation, you know, is, is a logical next step there.
Just to be clear, I would love to have public comment, but it scares me.
Absolutely. No, I completely agree. Oh, boy, I would love to have it.
Absolutely. But to Jeff's point, I think it would be nice to, to be able to, and I think the chair had the same, uh, comment. I think it would be nice to have the attorney in front of us to be able to ask back and forth questions. Mine would be, well, what can we talk about? I, I, I can't find anything that we can, that we can talk about.
Yeah, because even, even talking with other people that ask about projects.
All these other places are doing it, there must be stuff to talk about, but that, that's, these attorneys are experts on this stuff. And we need to, you know, so let's, let's have the chat. And let's continue the conversation and let's, and let's move, you know, let's see if we can move forward.
And I think to your point, one thing that we're allowed to talk about, in my opinion, there's nothing that I feel that we would be answering at public comment. So we aren't really talking about anything. We're just hearing. This gentleman in the room has got something to say. He's got a chance at public comment so long as it's not about an existing, you know, site plan that, that's gonna have a public hearing. Come talk and we don't have a response, but we give some, we give them an outwit to say what they're.
You can't talk about past decisions the, the board has made because that's, you know, settled. And you can't talk about anything that's coming up in, in the future. And usually some of the future stuff we might know a little bit about from talking with our staff. But, you know, uh, the time that we make the decision is not with the staff or anything, it's right here at the public.
The process that we have right now is cumbersome, and I'm talking about systemically.
Yeah.
In, in the fact that the conservation commission meets at a certain time and talks about the case that we just did a month ago or three weeks ago. It's reported in the paper that it was approved. They didn't, but that's what was reported. Okay, it's two different things occur. They say one thing, and I heard what she said on the tape, she didn't say approved. But when it gets to the newspaper, it says approved. Now people come in screaming, you guys just approved blah, 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 blah. No, we didn't. We haven't even seen it yet.
We haven't even seen it.
They don't, they, they don't understand that. They don't, they don't know that.
Did that happen?
No.
I just want to make sure that you're, you're not reporting something that happened.
The paper is not what Marge said. Yes, that did happen, but no one came in screaming because it, it was, our next meeting.
Public comment.
Yeah, we don't have public comment.
Nice, Kelly.
But you, but you see what I'm saying? And so now somebody's gonna get frustrated because they're gonna say, we didn't see, yes, sir, you, you approved it. No, we didn't. The conservation had, had a, had a meeting and, and, and they voted to move it for, what do you say?
Recommend.
To recommend.
Either recommending or not recommending.
That's the word Marge, she, she was very careful about it.
Yeah.
And, and, or not recommend, recommend or not recommend. And she used, I, I heard her say it. But yet, you know, everyone either thinks it was approved or that's how it was reported. And then people, you know.
Yeah, could I get quick questions?
That's what we're up against. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, could I get questions because what people have read, read the paper? And I'm saying, well, it wasn't really what, what happened. And this is, you know, on decisions that have been, been made. This is what, was the decision of the board made. So, I mean, they're free to, uh, listen to the, uh, you know, uh.
So to Kelly's point.
Tony, that, what you're talking about there, nobody came in because this isn't a, this wasn't a controversial project.
Correct.
You know, if this was a controversial project and people had read that it had been approved, there would have been a lot more people here with a lot more comments to be, to be made.
That's fair. Yeah.
I think the other end of it is if we have any.
Unfortunately, no.
That's the problem right now.
So, uh, yeah, there's no, uh, public input on, on this.
I think the big issue that we could be facing is even if we he, even hear something that someone says during any public comment session that we, uh, put in place, that could leave us liable for even hearing it. As well I had read from.
So it could prejudice our decision because we heard it.
Yeah, yeah, we're prejudiced.
And that's a question for the attorney that I'd, I would love to hear his answer.
So, uh, she had written to us is that even if we hear what they say, it could leave us prejudiced on something.
Yeah, because, because if we hea- hear something like that, we'd all have to step down.
Right.
And then who takes over? Because at, then at that point, it goes to the town council too.
Right. Essentially, we are like a jury and if we hear something from someone technically, we've then heard it.
So let me ask another question. So we've been operating under these set of rules for what, twelve years?
Twenty fifteen is when these were enacted.
What problem are we really trying to solve?
You know, my biggest thing is just giving people the ability to talk if they feel so inclined to. We had a couple of meetings that were difficult because we were, which was originally what had started this whole process, was making it, this whole process started making it more clear that, you know, we have operated that on, um, conceptual designs and stuff like that. There, there is no public comment because it's not a public comment. But that wasn't actually written anywhere. That, that was what had started this was, you know, we all agree there should be no comment on something conceptual or anything like that, but there was no, there was no rule that said there is no public comment because it's a, not a public hearing. So then for me, that kind of graduated from that to, okay, we've solved this issue, but what about just general public comment?
Because I guess where I come from is we've been operating under the rules for a long time. Yeah, we may have had one or two problems or three problems, but what are we going to create by doing this? Are we gonna, you know, what are the unintended consequences of what we're proposing?
You're starting to sound like Mr. D with that word, unintended consequence.
I did not invent that. I stole it, just like Linda.
That's what we're good, are good at, unintended consequences, you know, that we create.
Can I just add to the, so what you're suggesting Jake is somebody comes up and makes a public comment, but we don't, we just all stare back at them because we can't say anything?
No, Art can tell them. Art can tell them. It's not appropriate question at this point in time.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's pretty much the only thing you can say.
So back to the chickens, right?
So is it a public statement?
Yeah, basically. So back to, back to the chickens thing, right? If somebody comes up and says, well, I want us to allow twenty-five chickens on one acre. Okay, thank you. Because if any of us were to respond and say, oh, yeah, you know, I agree with you or anything like that, then we're creating this prejudice to, you know, a possible change in our.
I, I think it gets to what Tony, I think you might have mentioned it, and is that just gonna annoy people even more? That, you know, we, we are letting them talk, but we can't listen or really.
We can't say anything. You just sit there and you're not. Asking and then it's like, yeah, you just sort of.
Yeah, but, oh, let me say.
Same breath does the council answer every public comment that comes to them or the school board? None of them.
I don't think it's appropriate. Somebody's had a week, somebody's had a week to prepare a question.
I agree. We need time to respond.
We need, we need time to provide a thoughtful response.
Well, I think that the proper place would be having a public hearing, not having a public comment. Because that would just give us a kind of load of trouble.
So how do you get to a public hearing now?
If, would happen to something that.
How do we finally get there?
We put it on the dock.
That's what I'm saying. We say, okay, let's have a public hearing about the twenty-five chickens.
You know, what we want to change on zoning, first, we have a workshop where we decide what we are going to present for a public hearing. So any, you know, so it does go through a public hearing where the public can comment on it. And if it's, you know, re- regarding zoning, we make a reco, just a recommendation and it goes to the town council as the governing body and they make the decision on it. If it's like, uh, you know, uh, our, uh, regulations for site plans and subdivisions, that's with the board and we have a public hearing on those. First, we discuss them and get our act together. Then we have a public hearing on it and that's when people can come in and comment.
Right.
So, I mean, there, there is the opportunity, but, yeah, I mean, it's at certain, uh, certain times.
I would ask this before we continue down the public comment trail. Can we get a consensus of the board of whether we even have the appetite to come to the next step and talk to the lawyer? Or are there enough people to say, no, I don't want this and it's done?
I think discussion is always, is always important.
Discussion is healthy. I think, I think we should talk with the, our lawyer.
But, but I ha, I just, I just had a thing, which doesn't happen too often. So the people come in, the people come in and they say, uh, first guy says, I want more chickens. Second guy comes in, I want no chickens. Somebody comes in and says, what's going on with the chickens? So, so at the end, at the end of the month or, or the next month, we have a workshop session. The chair said, the chair has a list who says, okay, we had somebody wants more chickens. Somebody wants less chickens. Somebody doesn't know what the hell's going on with chickens. And, and, and somebody, somebody wants to talk about setbacks. Somebody wants to, and then we have our workshop and we talk about all of the comments that have been made by the general public to say. And then we say, we want to entertain this or not.
Yeah. And from there, it could be a way to do it.
There's one other thing too, is, is if you do have a list, a long line of people up there with public comments and you're having it at the beginning of the meeting, all these folks that are sitting there to get their plans heard, that have hired attorneys and staff and everybody else that's being billed by the, by the hour.
Want to say I originally put it after, after all of the, I, I think I put the public comment after all of the business of the meeting. Because I do understand and realize that, I mean, whoever was in here today, I bet you that cost a couple thousand dollars. So if he had to sit here for another twenty-five minutes over public comment.
Well, chase developers away.
Yeah. Uh, but I, I did put it after our business of the meeting.
Yeah, Southern Hampshire Planning has their public comment at, at the end. They have staff reflections first and they have public comment. The only one who's public, public, been there for public comment is Ray talking about water.
So what is the consensus to?
Yeah, can we get a, can we get a consensus? Uh, can we just go down the board of whether we want to have the conversation or not?
I wouldn't.
Yes.
Are we able to approve all the rest of the changes that we've already made?
That's what I'm, let's get them public comment and either say yes or no, and then everything else, let's consider it done, right? You know, check it out.
Consensus on proceeding with scheduling a meeting.
Meeting with the attorney.
With the attorney.
Would that be a, that would be a non-public meeting?
That's the consensus. Everyone would like to discuss it further with our attorney. Okay.
Yes.
That's what our, our plan is.
We're all in agreement that that's a yes. As for the rest of the items, I, we've basically all already said that we were okay with it, um, adding.
This is just the first reading. Correct.
Yeah, I've, I've got a few changes though.
Uh-oh.
Small. Page two. Uh, under four, it's, uh, chair, chair, I think that's a mistake. Page three, let's see, uh, right above four point eight is chair. I don't think that needs to be there.
Yep.
Yeah, let's see, page five. I, I numbered these pages myself because I've always learned that to number pages because then you can't find anything or no one else can't find anything. Okay, page five. At seven point eight, at the very top, uh, there should be time limited for each individual speaker. Uh, it should be the limit. Proper English.
There's, you're saying there shall be a time limit?
Limit.
For each individual speaker of five minutes?
Yeah, because when it talks about five minutes, you know it's a limit. And, okay, page six. Uh, is it the, the public comment thing, which our decision is, is to discuss with our attorney?
Yeah, set up a meeting.
Okay.
That five minutes is for people coming in.
That's my concern too, is, yeah, that would just be for, that would not be for any of the presenters. That would just be for this gentleman in the public that's looking to talk about sixty Pettingill.
There's a lot of people, we want them all to at least say, say something. And I know in the past when we've had a lot of people, th- there's a point, you know, there's other people waiting to speak. Let them all, you know, if they want to speak again, let everyone speak first and then you start again on, if they have something new. And if they don't have anything new, it's time to move on.
You have seven point two, which is the, when the applicant and the presenter speak. So it's, that's their time to speak.
Okay.
And that is not limited.
And then Kelly, you added seven point twelve, correct?
The board asked for that to be added.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So I think seven point eight needs to be still wordsmithed a little bit, just to make it perfectly clear that the five minutes applies to members of public speaking during the public comment section.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I would agree with that.
Some, some people tend to, tend to ramble and ramble and ramble and you don't know what they're saying.
But you could apply that to other sections. I mean, it's just not clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and I think Tristan put this together, didn't she, uh, for, for the chair?
I have a, I have a question. I wasn't here for the January meeting.
Yep.
On nine point six, it says we're getting rid of, uh, provide feedback on the presentation and any renderings. Does that mean we're not?
No, I think.
Comment on those anymore?
I think what Kelly was getting at was we're just providing feedback to the applicant. On whatever.
On whatever.
You know, because then we're actually technically limiting ourselves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just whatever, we're just getting.
Okay, okay. Because, because I was reading that, I'm like, are we not allowed to say if we don't like the way something looks anymore?
What's a rendering?
Yeah.
What's a rendering?
Exactly, exactly.
Things to different people.
Exactly.
Yeah, conceptual is designed as, as back and forth between the applicant and the planning board.
Yeah, exactly.
And there's no, no decisions are made or anything.
Correct.
And it's just to get ideas out and to he- help, help them out and what, you know, the board is looking for. And so, you know, and I think, uh, some attorneys recommend that, uh, there's always should be a conceptual discussion before they come in for a public hearing.
So they reword, reword seven point eight?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do we want to give Kelly exactly what it is now? If we have any wordsmiths up on the dais here?
I can do it, but I can do it right now.
Okay, absolutely.
Would you like me to just say member of the public instead of speaker?
There shall be time limited for each individual member of the public for five minutes.
Yeah, are limited at public hearing.
What about for each individual public hearing comment?
I'll leave it to Lynn to email it to Kelly.
Can I write something and get it to you in the morning?
That would be wonderful, Lynn. Thank you.
Um, could we, is there any chance we could have this meeting before the next planning board meeting? Just to not draw out this, obviously, if we have to have it in, what, what month are we in?
Our next meeting is next week.
Next, that's what I'm saying. That's real short notice. Is there any way, if not, can we just not? I think we're on like month three of this. Can we?
Well, we, we could need to, if, if, if the board could be available when our attorney is available.
Yeah.
I, I will ask.
That's all I'm asking, is if it could be sooner rather than later. That's all.
That's really soon.
That's what I'm saying. That is very soon. You know, I'm just.
Or right before the next meeting.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is that is very soon. It's only a week away.
Yeah, we're middle like at, at six thirty, you know, uh, or I could say probably at least five, five thirty. It's usually five thirty is that when we have the training.
Yeah.
Can I wordsmith seven twelve? All of seven twelve as well?
You can wordsmith whatever you would like.
Yep.
As long as that's what the board wants.
I'll put it out there for everybody. Just, there's some stuff in there that just should go. Yeah, you work with Kelly and Kelly can let, let all of us know.
Absolutely.
So, uh, is there anything, uh, you know?
There's nothing on those last pages.
We don't, we don't need to make a motion or anything with that, right?
No.
No.
And this technically isn't the first hearing because we're, well, that's what I'm getting at is it would be nice in an ideal world if we could have a real first hearing at the next meeting. But that's real, maybe if we were in the.
It'd be a hearing for us.
Maybe if we were in the second meeting now and there was three weeks to another one, that's a little more feasible.
And Kelly, could we get a clean? Kelly, can we get a clean copy as well as the markup?
Yep.
Thanks. Uh, I, I just got, uh, a couple of things here. Uh, okay, Tristan Hilden will be in. I, I just got, uh, a couple of things here. Uh, okay, Tristan Hilden will be in on our next meeting on the thirteenth.
I thought it was this one, that was what I was just gonna ask.
No, that's the thirteenth, uh, on the, I know the email I got from her, and it's about the new email system. So how it, how it functions, what email addresses are, how to get into it, it's like starting all over again with a, with a system, so. And then, uh, also we have election of offices, uh, on the thirteenth also. We'll do that in other business. And are there any continued plans? I think there's two continued plans we have for the third of April. That is the, uh, ninety-six units on, on Gilchrist and then, uh, Plainview Drive, I believe. Am I right, Kelly?
It is Plainview, sorry, Plainview is on the tenth.
The tenth, okay.
Gilchrist is on the third.
Okay.
It's ninety-six, the Hannaford side or the other side?
The other side.
Gilchrist is when?
The other side?
Yeah, this is where the, uh, piece, piece of property that, uh, the town, uh, sold off. Let's see. Okay, board have anything else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Hilden.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have?
Second.
Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, we are adjourned.